Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 31st, 2024 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be August 28th, 2024, 6:30 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to all the forces that stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and next, Patrick, do you have the preamble?
I do, Mr. Chair. Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, the representatives, the butters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met that criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open up the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner in public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments shall be made directly toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
And for anyone that is looking to speak tonight regarding any of the petitions that we're going to be hearing, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn in. Any sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Alright, thank you so much. So it looks like we do have a full board tonight, and want to welcome Scott, new to the board. So we will jump into agenda item number three, USA Chicken Petitioner and SPNK Merrimack LLC, CEO Trammell Crow, CEO Owner, rehearing of KCBA 2024-11, in which the board denied a special exception under section 2.02.13 D2C of the zoning ordinance to permit a drive-through food service use in the Town Center Overlay District, the parcel located at 421 Daniel Webster Highway, and the C2 General Commercial Elderly Overlay and Town Center Overlay District's tax map 5D-4, lot 91, KCBA 2024-11.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Brett Allard with Shaughnessy Allard, the attorney for the applicant, USA Chicken, who the principal of that company is seated with me to my left, Sepurud.
How's it going, guys?
How are you?
So as the chair indicated, this is 421 Daniel Webster Highway. This property is the former Santander Bank Lot, which my understanding is that that closed in 2021, situated at the corner of Daniel Webster Highway and Railroad Ave across from Fraser Square. The property is located in the C2 District and the Town Center Overlay District. It's at the very southern end of the Town Center Overlay District, and the property's improved with an existing building and parking lot that pretty much wraps around, the parking lot wraps almost 360 degrees around the building. It does currently have three drive-through teller lanes that was formerly used by the bank, and it has curb cuts, three curb cuts, one on Daniel Webster Highway and two on Railroad Ave. A bit of procedural history, my client appeared first before this board back at the May meeting on the special exception to allow the drive-through for the food service establishment. There were some concerns at that meeting, mostly concerning traffic, but there's also a lot of positive feedback that came out of that meeting. Ultimately, there was only four members present. The vote was two to two, and the board mistakenly construed that as a denial. We filed a motion for rehearing. The board recognized that error, granted the rehearing that was at the June meeting, and then rescheduled the rehearing, so here we are tonight for that purpose. Sort of big picture here, this is a commercial property. It's situated in two commercial zones, again, the C2 underlying district and the town commercial or the Town Center Overlay District. The special, excuse me, food service restaurants are permitted by right in both of those zones. It's just the drive-through component that we're here again tonight asking for the special exception. The special exception is actually kind of a misnomer because it's not really an exception to the ordinance in the same way that a variance is. A variance is a request to allow something that the zoning ordinance prohibits, whereas a special exception authorizes a necessary, desirable, and acceptable use that the zoning ordinance expressly permits, as long as you can demonstrate satisfaction of the conditions. Other drive-through uses are allowed on this site, like what's currently there. The bank was allowed to have the drive-through, that was by right. But if you look at the relevant section of the Town Center Overlay District's use provisions, drive-throughs with respect to food service establishments specifically require the special exception that we're asking for. So the primary concerns at the May meeting, again, like I said, were increased traffic. You know, there was some discussion that night, and I would agree that that's primarily the concern of the planning board for site plan review. But nonetheless, we have prepared and submitted a traffic study, which I believe the board received a few days ago, and in that sense, I think we've probably provided more than what's typically required or necessary for this type of special exception, but we thought it was important, given the amount of discussion that there was back at the last meeting concerning traffic. And so if you look at that traffic study, our hours of operation that we're proposing are 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. And the traffic study has a chart that breaks down weekday AM peak hours, weekday PM peak hours, and Saturday peak hours in terms of trip generation. The weekday PM, or excuse me, the weekday AM peak hour for the bank that was primarily that formerly there, the study compares the former bank use versus our proposed drive-through restaurant use. The weekday AM peak hour for the trips for the bank was 26 trips, and we are eliminating those trips because my client's business is not open during those types of weekday AM peak hours like the bank was. So that's a 26-trip reduction in the weekday AM peak. For the weekday PM peak, our traffic study put the bank at 81 trips and placed us at 54 trips, so that's a reduction of 27 trips in the weekday PM peak hour. For the Saturday peak hour, the bank had 83 trips, and we have 91 trips, so we are adding eight trips on a typical Saturday. But if you look at sort of the overarching situation out there as set forth in the traffic study, our engineer found that there was about 13,075 vehicles per day along this corridor of Daniel Webster Highway, and that has daily fluctuations in either direction of about 550 trips. So adding eight trips during a Saturday when you're fluctuating over 500 trips on any given day, you know, is effectively no increase at all. And if you combine all of the peak combination trips I just discussed, AM, PM on the weekdays, and then Saturday, bank versus us, we're actually reducing trips by 45 on a sort of net weekly basis. And in connection with that, and based on that, the study found that traffic associated with this proposal can be safely accommodated on the adjacent roadway network without the need for improvements. And again, the planning board would take a quick, take a good look at all of this stuff as well. In terms of some other concerns that were raised, some had to do with the noise from the speaker for the drive-through. The bank currently has a speaker or had a speaker, and we heard from some folks that they could hear that, you know, from the residences or whatnot, but we're actually proposing a different layout. So the teller speakers are in the same spot of the building where the transaction with the teller occurs, and that's in the back of the building opposite Daniel Webster Highway. We're proposing to move that speaker to the south end of the building so it faces the chiropractic office and the other businesses because essentially it's a two stops with your typical drive-through rather than one. You order at the speaker, then you pull around the building, and they hand you your food out the back end. So that speaker will actually be placed away from those residences, facing Daniel Webster Highway, and facing the other business complex that's off the south end of the site.
Actually, I have a question about that. One of the things that we did discuss in that meeting was the possible creation of fencing or some type of sound barrier that would prevent that, the sound from the speaker box from permeating other properties. Is there anything like that planned with this?
Yes, we've already got two estimates, a couple companies come that have given us votes to put, restructure the fencing.
Okay.
Also, just on a brief overlook, if you see, there's a lot of hedging in trees. That was something else that we wanted to discuss. We'd have to cut a lot of trees and bushes and restructure that whole area, you know. Some of the trees are sitting not on our property. So if we put up a fence that was strong, the trees and stuff might knock it back down, so there's a lot of hedging, like almost covered, but in the wintertime, it's going to be branches, so that's, but that isn't the plan, correct?
And certainly something that we'd be exploring with the planning board in connection with the site plan and design as well.
And would that be, just out of curiosity, would that be on the edge that is facing the properties only, or will that also face the chiropractor?
Just on the residential property.
Okay, thank you.
And as we discussed at that last meeting, or was discussed at that last meeting, we are removing two of those, there's three drive-up lanes right now for the three tellers. This business only needs one, so we're going to remove two of those drive-through lanes, so it is only the one speaker and then the one drive-through lane. In terms of parking, lighting, landscaping, and noise, again, all things that would be addressed during, by the planning board on site plan review, but we are proposing to do some revitalization, landscaping, rehabbing, sort of like you just heard. The fence in the back needs some work, we're going to take a look at that. We're not proposing any new parking spaces. I think the parking is sufficient. I think the planning board will find that the parking is sufficient, but we are going to restripe the spaces that are closest to Daniel Webster Highway because they're currently sort of parallel or, excuse me, perpendicular to the traveled way. We're going to change those to angled spaces because if you look at the plan, it calls for sort of internal traffic circulation. That's one way all the way around the building, so the angled spaces, people back out, and they have to go the way that the traffic circulates within the site. So we think that makes sense. We think that'll really help to facilitate that sort of one-way internal traffic circulation, and that'll be in combination with pavement markings, arrows, signage, ensuring that all of this works from an internal traffic circulation basis. And that's going to be also in combination with the three curb cuts. It's going to be in, enter only on one of the Railroad Ave curb cuts, and then the other two curb cuts, one on Railroad Ave, one on DW Highway, those are both going to be exit only. So you're not going to have people coming in and out simultaneously of any particular curb cut. It's going to be dedicated one way in, one way out as to each of those. So that's what I have for background information, procedural stuff. I'd be happy to dive into the criteria unless there's any other questions.
Alright, go ahead.
Number one, the site is in appropriate location for the proposed use in accordance with the Town Center Plan. If you take a look at the Town Center Master Plan, restaurants are a desired amenity. The drive-through is an accessory to that desired amenity and supportive of it. The drive-through service is permitted and acceptable type of use as it is allowed by special exception. This site, again, as I said, is at the very southern end of the Town Center Overlay District, has three curb cuts on two public roads to facilitate access. We talked about the internal traffic circulation, and the drive-through, the drive-through's already there, actually, because the bank is there. The bank had the drive-through, and that will remain, so we're not changing things too much, except that we are reducing it from those three lanes to one and moving the speaker. So we do think that the site is appropriate for the proposed use and can support the proposed use. Number two, the proposed use would not result in significantly increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians by way of traffic congestion ingress or egress. Not to, I'm not going to reiterate everything I talked about with the traffic study, but we are doing a net reduction in trips on a weekly basis. The traffic study demonstrates our compliance with this criteria, that there will not be any significantly increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, that the lot can support it, that the traffic will actually be less than it was when it was a bank. Combined with the restriping, the pavement markings, the signage to ensure seamless interior traffic circulation, and of course, the planning board will be taking a look at this during site plan review, so we think we have satisfied that criteria. Number three, the proposed use would not result in unreasonable impacts or abutting, to abutting properties by way of increased noise, odor, visual blight, or other nuisance. Again, that speaker relocation, gentle revitalization of the property, I think we've complied with this criteria. We're going to reduce noise impacts on nearby residences as compared to the bank by moving that speaker, by building some of the screening, the hedges, the bushes, the fencing, as you heard, and all that noise, odor, visuals. We don't see any impacts here. We don't, we don't think those are really, are really issues, but again, the planning board is going to take a good look at that during site plan review. And last but not least, the proposed use is in the designed, is designed in harmony with the overall goals of the Town Center Plan with respect to building, transportation corridor, and site design and arrangement. That, that sort of is a culmination of all the other criteria, so I think for purposes of brevity, I'll incorporate by reference the rest of my comments, and I think we've satisfied the criteria. Would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, would request that the board grant the special exception.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, one, a couple, actually. So how many? It's on, maybe it's not close enough to me. There we go. What's the typical cycle time for a drive-through through this type of restaurant?
Most of our food's prepared, so we're aiming for under five minutes.
Under five minutes?
Correct. From ordering to out, and that's at peak hours.
Okay, yeah, I mean, when I looked at this, my only concern was like if the drive-through would, so my other question is, the 10-stack requirement, where did that come from?
It was from the town.
Is that in the planning board?
Yeah, that would be in the planning board's site plan regulations.
That's 10, okay, I couldn't find it, so I was wondering where that came from. So, so at peak hours, you're looking at like one and a half cars per minute and about a five-minute cycle time.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to think about how that might stack up and come around, so that was just my only consideration there.
Any other questions in the board?
I don't have a question, but I do have, I do have a comment. I'm pleased that you listened and made some adjustments, reducing the drive-through lanes to one instead of three gives you more of a buffer between your site and the residences. Angling the parking spaces in the front makes a lot of sense, and moving, especially moving the speaker to the front of the building as opposed to the back of the building. So I appreciate you making those accommodations. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments from the board? Alright, I'll go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone speak in favor of the petition? Alright, feel free to grab the microphone, state your name, residence, and whatever comments you have.
Is it on?
It sounds like it's on.
Okay, thanks. I'm Tony Jancola, 149 Babusick Lake Road. I own the building at 419 the Chiropractic Office, and I'm for it. If anything, it's better than the bank because people used to fill out their slips in my parking lot and then drop their cigarettes, and it caused all kinds of trouble that way. So just a single rotatory movement is, I think it'll be fine. And even with the bank there, there was never really a traffic concern at all, so I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. By all means.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board. Good evening. My name's State Representative Tim McHugh, Bowers Landing Drive, and I'm here in support of the applicant as well. I first met USA Chicken about 10 years ago in Manchester when they first opened the store, and I thought, what an interesting name, Patriotic Chicken Place, this'll never work. And then I was proven wrong because they were a really valuable member of that community, good to the first responders, and I didn't know the owners at all. I just ate there as a member of that community, a first responder, worked there, and the food was great. Then they opened another one in Nashua, and I thought, well, that's interesting. Geez, they must be doing great. Then I heard they were applying here, and I thought, well, that's fantastic for the Town Center, another option. So I looked into them a little bit and realized they weren't a franchise. Then I heard they were opening one in Salem just in a couple weeks, and I thought how fantastic for our town, an independent, family-owned, family-operated business, not, you know, somebody ahead of their time, ahead of the chicken craze. You know, we all saw Dave's Nashville Hot Chicken open in Manchester, Popeyes open in Nashua, Chick-fil-A open in Nashua. Well, finally, Merrimack gets a reputable, successful, proven entity, and after all, 80% of jobs in New Hampshire are small businesses. So this fits right in with our town plan, and these guys have become already proven to respond to the neighbors. So it's really important that we respond to the neighbors. And I watched the May hearing and the June hearing and saw what happened, and I heard the concerns like you did, that the neighbors are worried about lights in their windows and the noise, so they've moved the speaker, they cut the drive-through from three down to one, and I hope that and any other concerns are addressed for the neighbors because they do have to live there, and I recognize that it's open later than 2:00 or, you know, later than normal. So they've already addressed those things, and I think they know first and foremost that customers pay their salaries, and word will spread. If they're not good neighbors, they won't have good customers, and word will spread very quickly. But these guys have already demonstrated that they're responsive, and I think they'll continue to be for the sake of their business. So thanks for letting me be heard. I hope we can bring a new small business, and food's good, and that's number one. I can, I can tell you what I had just the other day. So appreciate you guys looking favorably and giving me a chance to address these concerns, and I know there's a couple more processes, planning board, and landscaping, and traffic, and all those things, so thanks for letting us be heard, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else looking to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone looking to speak against this petition? Please feel free to state your concerns.
Yeah, my name's Dustin Sherry. I'm the owner of Seven Railroad Ave, which is probably the closest residential house to the proposed location. So yeah, I lived there from 2017 to 2022, and now I just own it as a, it was an owner-occupied rental property, and now it's just a full rental property. I know my tenants are very concerned, and one of my biggest issues is the proposal that was set is assuming that the drive-through worked for the bank. It was a disruption when I lived there and when tenants before now lived there as well. And I also just want to mention there, they're saying that the speaker is moved. Right now, the speaker is the closest possible point it could be to my property. It's not actually moved all the way around what they're proposing, it's actually just to the side. So that would help if it was on the other side facing Daniel Webster Highway, but it's just on the side, which is still going to have noise pollution to my property. The other thing I want to mention is comparing a bank drive-through to a fast-food service drive-through, it's apples and oranges. I mean, banking activity is not a pileup 10 cars. I mean, I can't tell you how many drive-throughs I've been in in my life where people are bumping, blasting music in the car behind you and just, and stuff's going on. I personally just don't, don't think it's the best use of the property, and it was also said that this, you know, I have some concerns for the town of Merrimack as well. Someone was speaking about how great the location was in Manchester and all that. There was actually a shooting that happened there with employees, the owner's son, and I just, I don't think it's a great fit for Merrimack. And a couple of the issues, you know, that they did the traffic study, it's guessing trip generation on a business that currently doesn't exist right now. I mean, how can you hold them to that exact amount of trips? It could be way more than that. So saying that you're lowering the trip generation compared to a failing bank is just an absolutely ridiculous statement, in my opinion. But yeah, and also the fence and the smell were kind of just brushed over at the end, I think, having a dumpster full of poultry products, no matter where you put it. And I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about my property value, I'm concerned about the safety of the traffic. I mean, it's, as was said in the previous meeting, it's not good as it is with the funerals going on and everything like that at Rivet. In my opinion, it's just, it's just not a good fit, and I appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else, please feel free?
Good evening, board. My name is Robert Earl. I'm at 8 Railroad Avenue. I am a mechanical engineer and an automotive engineer. I've been working from home since 2008, so I know what goes up and down the highway. On the traffic study, did they do the type of vehicles that go up and down Railroad Avenue? Is that in the traffic study?
I mean, that's a good question. I'm sure they can respond to that after.
Okay, so I see 18-wheel tankers going up and down that roadway, right? I don't know what's down the other end of Railroad Ave, but 18-wheel tankers can barely go up and down that road. Okay, then I see the, there's a lumber company that's up that road, alright? They have these huge trucks that bring logs up and down that road, they have trailers, they speed down that road. I have no idea how they're going to get by those cars in a drive-through, no idea. The other thing I have is the fryolator. The fryolator's going to produce oil, it's going to go into the air. Are they going to come around and clean our cars from the oil that's going to get on our cars? I used to live in Salem, Mass, and in Salem, there's a whole bunch of drive-throughs, a whole bunch of fast-food restaurants, and all the, all of the people that live in the area complain about all the grease that gets on their cars, but nobody addresses that. Is that going to be addressed here? Are they going to come around and clean our cars when the oil gets on it from the fryolators? I don't know. Third thing is property values. Has the town done a study on what happens to property values, okay, when a business like this goes in? Has it? I don't know. And then the other thing for everybody here that says, oh, it's a great thing, do they live near anything like that? Do you representative live near a business like that? You do? What business is that? I'd like to know. Alright, a Dunkin' Donuts is a little different than a burger, a fryolator type of place. Alright, so I like people to think about that. If you live in this area where we do, would you want that type of business? Okay? Tankers going up and down the roadway, how are they going to get by the drive-through cars? How are they going to do it? They're not going to be able to do it. Okay, now you have buses, okay? When the kids start, you're going to have buses going up and down in the afternoon. Okay, what's going to happen to that? Okay, now you're going to have, now let's say you have the buses, now you have a funeral parlor going on, right? You're going to have all this traffic in this area, which right now is just barely manageable, and now you want to add in all of this drive-through stuff. Doesn't make any sense to me. Does it to you? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else looking to speak against this petition? Alright, I'll go ahead and, I'm sorry, go for it.
Hi, I'm Alice Drohan. I, I'm the owner, or one of the owners of 6 Railroad Avenue, which is between the flower shop and this gentleman's property, and I am not in favor of this. I'm really concerned about my property value. Our property has been, because it is a small lot, it has been designated as totally residential use only. We've tried a couple of times to get other types of business application for the use of the property there, and since we can only use residential, I'm concerned that having this chicken place here is going to be an issue for me being able to sell the property as a residential unit. So I am concerned about the value of my property, this happening. I'm also concerned about the backup of traffic, so I'm not, I'm not really understanding how the lineup is for the, the order. You know, when you order, where does the traffic go while people are waiting? Is it backing up onto Daniel Webster Highway? Is it backing up into Railroad Avenue? Is the traffic moving from Railroad Avenue up into what was the bank? And then, I'm not understanding how all of that's working and how that's going to be manageable. If there's a huge backup, does the backup- If there's a huge backup, does the backup go out into the road? Does it go out into Railroad Avenue?
So what I, what I could tell you is that we do have a site plan. Um, however, that's not something that we're going to be used to vote on tonight because, uh, the site plan is really more for the planning board to be, to be evaluating this. And I think those are good questions. Those are not questions we're going to be able to answer tonight because that's something that's going to happen at the planning board level.
So the planning board has to approve this as well?
Correct, yes. So a lot of times when, when we have petitions for businesses particularly, they will go through the zoning board to determine if it's a good fit, um, in terms of the zoning. Not necessar-
So we haven't really looked at how the backup of the traffic is going to happen?
And, and we won't because that, not at the zoning board level. At the planning board level, we'll do that. So assuming that the special exception passes, the next step would be to go to the planning board where things like what you just mentioned will be addressed.
Okay, so that's not being taken into consideration here?
Not tonight, no.
So the zoning board only takes into consideration whether or not the site is viable for this type of a business? And that's all we do. The planning board takes care of backups, parking, traffic, light pollution, noise pollution. That's the, that's all planning board. That's out of our privy. We can't, we can't make any determination based on that.
A lot of times when petitioners come up to us, they'll bring that information forward because they're going to need it on their end. We don't need it on ours. So they're going to need it because they're going to have to present this again to the planning board. And that's when this information's going to become relevant. But it's just not relevant to us.
Okay, yeah, I'm just not understanding how all that's going to work.
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I don't get it, so, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone looking to speak in regards? All right, please feel free.
Hi, my name's Michelle Smitty. Um, I've been a Merrimack resident for over twenty years. I used to live at Railroad Ave. Um, and first of all, I want to say I am a huge fan of USA Chicken. I used to eat it all the time in Manchester. Um, and I'm rooting for, for the business itself, just not in that location. I feel like I'm going to be echoing what most people are already saying because these are the things that are coming to mind as, you know, possible issues. And of course, it is the traffic piece. Um, honestly, if the building could magically move over into the chiropractic area in that, that way, it would maybe still back up a little bit of traffic on DW. But it's really the fact that it butts a residential road. Railroad Ave. is residential. Um, and so like the two spots, and I know this is going to be a part of the planning board piece, but the two spots that are going to be an exit, one in, one out on Railroad Ave., which I think they were alluding to, um, it sounds good in theory. But if you see what that actually looks like, it's like the other gentleman was explaining with the, the big trucks have a hard time getting in and out of that road. Um, it's just really crammed. Maybe if Railroad Ave. was to size the widths that, that it is currently, sure, maybe it would work. But it's just the way that it is set up right now, I think it would cause a lot of backup, a lot of dangerous, you know, chance for people to have an accident. Um, I've been an emergency room nurse for a long time. I've seen accidents over and over again. And this just looks like a such, it would be such a congestion and just confusion in, out, people living there and just, I, I just, that's what concerns me most. Um, and also the little park that is across from there. Granted, it's not like people are playing in the park every day. There's the nicer one down the road a little bit, um, which is also adding more traffic to Merrimack. But that little park on holidays, people sit there, they watch the parade with their family. Kids are running around in that little grass area. They just sit on the Fourth of July. I can only imagine, you know, drive-through traffic going in and out of there with all this happening as well. It's just, it looks like a recipe for disaster. And again, I'm rooting for the business. I think i- it's really good food and I have nothing against them at all. It's just, I don't think this location is best. So thank you for hearing me.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else looking to speak tonight? All right, go for it.
Hi, my name is Sarah. Um, I live at Seven Railroad Avenue. Oh my goodness, six. I'm nervous. Anywho, um, I'm fully remote, so I work from home. I am not a traffic study expert, but I definitely see the traffic because my window actually faces right into DW. And I see all the traffic that goes in and out and in and out. Um, my question that I just wanted to pose is when was this study actually, um, like, when did it take place for the traffic study? Because I know we heard some numbers.
All right.
But I don't know, was it during the school year or was it during just the summer months right now?
I can certainly have them address that once we're, we're done with the butter comments.
Okay.
So we can certainly go into that. However, again, a- as mentioned earlier, that's not something we're taking into consideration on our end. But that is something that will be, uh, used in consideration for planning board.
I understand. It's just three, four set of the year when school is in session, that road and backups are very much a concern. And even just trying to get out at any point is very, very hard and very, very dangerous. And again, um, just like Robert mentioned, we do have a lot of eighteen-wheelers. We have the flower shop that does their big deliveries. And sometimes they even come out into ours lot. You have Amazon Prime. Again, this is all stuff I know you guys aren't seeing at this level. But at the next level, when you do see it, it's, it's a lot. Um, I'm, I, I just hang around and maybe fully remote work with me. It'd be fun. But, uh, yeah, the, the smell is a little bit of a concern. The traffic is a really large concern for us, I know. And if we can get an answer, at least for that study, just because again, apples to oranges with the, a bank. I also worked at a bank, so I know what the traffic flow usually was. Usually your peak times were about when everybody is getting out of work. But peak times for food is lunch, which I know they're going to be opening up at eleven. So you have traffic flow from like eleven to three. That's the latest for lunch. And then another flow of time, just, it's a lot. So just take into consideration the people that do live there. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, quickly, can we see if we can get a last name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have you state your last name for our records?
Oh, yes. Uh, it's Drohan.
All right, thank you so much. All right, any other comments regarding this petition? All right, I will go ahead and, uh, if you could please address some of the concerns that were brought up.
Sure.
So it sounds, I mean, it sounds like most of what, uh, I'm hearing are sort of general objections to this business. Uh, being here in terms of, you know, the, the actual nature of the business itself, I did just want to remind the board that we're only here for the drive-through. This business could go here without the drive-through as a matter of right. And there would be no zoning board relief required.
And also as a special exception, it is a, uh, an already approved use of the property, so.
And to the extent we do need an approval, it is the special exception. It's not a variance, which is deemed a necessary, desirable and attractive use. Um, and, and in terms of the, um, you know, it is a commercial property and it is a commercial district. It's in two commercial districts. And I understand there are residences nearby. And, um, the line between the districts has to be drawn somewhere. But ultimately, this is a commercial site. Um, our traffic study, um, this was done by Bob Duval at TF Moran, very experienced, very reputable. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here tonight. Otherwise, he could probably speak to the specifics a lot more than I can. Um, but that being said, like I alluded to at the beginning of the presentation, it's probably the boot, the belt and suspenders approach to even produce a traffic study to the zoning board in these types of, um, instances. Uh, the, the planning board's going to be the one looking at this. Um, they are, you know, the trip generation is, is based on, um, the, the land use codes that are referenced in the study, based on the, um, ITE Trip Generation Handbook, Third Edition from two thousand seventeen. I can't speak to it a whole lot more than that. But I think that based on the estimations in the traffic study, it demonstrates, or at least gives you a broad picture, that, um, trip generation is, is going to be at least somewhat consistent with what's in the study. Um, and that the site can handle it. So, um, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. And the only, the only comment that I was going to address, I'm going to keep this as absolutely brief as I can, is I, I actually was a restaurant manager for many years. Um, and, um, hearing the comments about grease, um, I find concerning because I actually know Board of Health in Manchester and Nashua fairly well. Um, I do know how, what goes into cleaning the grease traps that are used above fryolators, above grills. Um, and I know the Board of Health would shut you down in a heartbeat if they thought you weren't cleaning them appropriately. So I've never, in, in my years as a restaurant manager or outside, heard of issues with grease on vehicles before. This is honestly the first time I've ever heard this. So wherever you lived, I apologize, they had no Board of Health. Because if they did, they'd all be shut down. I'm telling you right now.
Well, that's because they sent people out to clean the vehicles. That was why.
That's the weirdest thing I've ever heard. Even in, when I was a restaurant manager, I never heard anything remotely close to that. So that's kind of, that's super weird. Um, but what I'll go ahead and do is, are there any final comments from the public before I go ahead and, and close this, the public portion of this? All right, feel free.
Just one other question. Did they look at any of this when snow is there in the snowplows and all that other stuff? Where the snow is going to be? Because I know they punish, they, uh, push the snow right up against the, uh, there's a kind of like a triangle there where, um...
That's a, that's a planning board. That's not something we need on us.
All right, just, just a question.
And they will look at it.
All right, feel free. Sure.
I know the gentleman at the chiropractor mentioned cigarette butts. Um, again, it is a drive-through. So with a lot of drive-through restaurants, I know that they usually have trash bins out. Is that something that, if that does go through, that is going to be looked at? Because again, I, I clean up a lot of trash because I love gardening outside. And I'm always picking up stuff. So that's-
That would be addressed by the planning board as well.
Okay.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public portion of this and entertain conversation from the board or a motion? All right.
Since nobody else is stepping up. Uh, I make a motion that the board finds that the petitioner's responses to the special exception criteria of the zoning ordinance are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact and further to grant the special exception under section two point oh, two point thirteen, capital D, two C of the zoning ordinance to permit a drive-through food service use in the Town Center overlay district, subject to the final conditions, that the petitioner shall seek plan approval for the pro- proposed use.
Site plan approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ben. Uh, motion made by Lynn, all in favor? All opposed? All right, four, one, zero. So unless somebody, uh, comes to appeal this, you have a thirty-day window where, um, you probably don't want to start any work. But then after that, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you so much, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next petition is Courtney and James Ruther, petitioner owner variance under section two point oh, two point one, A two D of the zoning ordinance to permit a dog grooming business as a home occupation in the residential district where such use is expressly prohibited. Parcel's located one sixty-seven Turkey Hill Road by the R four, residential by soils in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map four D lot three, case CBA two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen.
Good evening. So this is Mackenzie, not James. Um, so I hope to open a small dog grooming business only on the weekends because I'm a stay-at-home mom during the week. And at most, I would do three dogs in a day, uh, so six dogs in a week. And each dog is only there for about an hour. And I have about a thirty-minute to one-hour window in between each dog. That way, no dog is overlapped. And also by, I have a very long and wide driveway. It's about a hundred twenty feet long and sixty feet wide. So cars and trucks can easily do a U-turn in it and not cause traffic trying to back out into Turkey Hill Road. And then also, I groom the dogs. It's a split-level house, so I'll be grooming in the basement. So if I do happen to get like a yappy Chihuahua, no one would be able to hear it. And since I don't put any dogs in the kennel, because it's just, for, usually only takes an hour because I only do small dogs, uh, there's really no reason for any dog to bark. And usually the owner is always there right on time in an hour. And when they leave, they, they drop off the dog and they usually leave to go to the outlet mall, Los Primos down the road, or, um, uh, Shaw's for grocery shopping. So it also kind of helps the community out because they're spending money in Merrimack because they're getting their dog groomed.
If I could just, uh, please have you state your name and address for our records?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay.
Uh, Courtney Ruther, one six seven Turkey Hill Road, Merrimack.
Thank you. All right, um, and if you want to just kind of walk us through the, uh, the variance criteria, um, pausing at the end of each one, do you happen to have your, the sheet that you filled out?
No, I don't. With the first one, in order to per- in order to permit?
Um, so, uh, the, the first one is the granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because?
Okay, so after COVID, um, there was a rise in people that wanted their dogs groomed, like, in and out. They didn't want to leave their dogs somewhere all day. And I've been grooming dogs for about fifteen years. And then once I had Mackenzie and she got old enough, I thought, why not start grooming on the weekends from home? And, uh, it immediately, uh, the response from people, people loved it because they don't want to leave their dog too long. And, uh, so it would be just a low-stress grooming environment and it would be quiet. And the neighbors wouldn't be able to hear it because I am so far away from the road. And my neighbors aren't very close either.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, please continue.
So, like I said, I only groom on the weekends, three to four dogs at most. And each dog is only with me for about thirty, or for an hour, with thirty-minute window. So no traffic is ever added because usually they maybe start at ten, I'm done by three. So that's three dogs in, you know, quite a good amount of time.
So do you have a set hours of operations that you're working through?
No.
Okay, are there hours at which you would not take somebody's dog?
I do not do dogs during the week. So like, since, if I were to do dogs during the week, it would only be in the evening. But that's just, it's just not good for me to do that with all her and, and, yeah. So I just do not groom Monday through Friday.
But I guess my question is like, so on the weekends, are there, are there times during the day that you would not consider taking somebody's dog?
Um, I'm usually, I like to be done by two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I just wasn't sure if you're going to be taking dogs at maybe like eight or nine o'clock at night?
No, no, no. I like to be done by two.
Okay.
And then I try, so I put her down for a nap and, um, that's it. So usually the morning, early afternoon hours.
All right, makes sense, thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, so you said thirty-minute windows. That means you have a dog, you're done, and then thirty minutes, there's no dogs. You're cleaning up, doing whatever.
Correct. Usually like thirty minutes to an hour, just in case someone is running late. And then that way, yes, I can vacuum and then clean up everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you groom a dog, do you first give them a shampoo?
Yes, so I wash them first.
Wash them?
And, uh, I have a shower, this is like a walk-in shower on the lower level. And it's a little, like, tub that I bought that you can just easily insert into the shower and then take it out. So it, no altercations were needed to be done to the house itself. And that's why I only do small dogs. So yeah, I wash them and then I groom them in the room right outside the bathroom. And there's a window there, so if a customer comes, I can see when they pull up. And I'll text them if I'm not done yet, you know, give me five or ten more minutes. And then I bring the dog out to them.
Excellent. Um, any other questions from the board? All right, please continue. So on three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because?
Because it does help, uh, dogs that are very anxious, that don't want to be there for a long time, like I said. And not only the dogs, but the owners that can be kind of anxious as well because after COVID, they don't want to leave their dogs anywhere. They're just scared to. So I feel like sometimes maybe the owners are more anxious than the dogs. But that gives them, you know, they feel safe knowing their dog is somewhere, like, right there, safe. No other dogs are there. And they can just come pick up within the hour. So it just helps with the anxiety. And then having the very long driveway helps them with the ease of just having to do a U-turn when they come in.
Oh, so they can turn around from within the driveway?
Yeah, they can just easily just go on in and then they could just easily, it's a very large driveway.
Okay.
Yeah. It could probably fit like ten cars.
All right, um, any questions from the board? All right, so number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because?
So, well, I'm not putting any signs outside the house. Um, I actually, my clientele, since I only do six dogs in a week- I actually, my clientele, since I only do six dogs in a week, it's already, it's already at a set, I'm set. Like I don't need any more clients, especially after not grooming for some time so I can get zoned. They're just waiting so I can book them up. So I'll be like months booked out already. So I'm, no more clients, but, so there won't be any signs. So the value of my property won't be diminished as well as there won't be any eyesores for the neighbors to look at. And then, like I said, only doing the three to four dogs within like a six-hour period. There's no traffic that will be created. And then on the weekends, there's just never traffic, you know, except, it's just usually during the week, between the hours of like 7 and 9 when it's really bad. And I will never take dogs during that time.
Okay, so you're saying you only do six dogs a week?
Yes.
So you're not doing three dogs every day?
No, only three on Saturday and three on Sunday.
Only weekends?
Only weekends.
Oh, okay, I got you.
It's too, it's too stressful to groom a dog and then watch her at the same time.
Do you have any dogs?
I do have one dog.
Yep.
And I keep her in the bedroom. I just don't even want the intera, even if she does get along with the dog, I just don't want that possible interaction. So there's a baby gate there that allows her not to go downstairs as well as that dog if she were to open that door that the dog is staying in. So yeah, she, the dog is never out.
All right, so for unnecessary hardship, if you want to just go and read through the A sect, or the, the first section, A and B?
Just kind of what I was saying before, this split-level house. I'll groom only downstairs. It'll suppress the noise, so neighbors, even if there's an owner waiting outside for their dog and I'm doing the nails, and they might be hollering because they don't want their nails done, the owner outside can't even hear that dog screaming because I'm downstairs. And I hate to say screaming, I'm not hurting the dog, I swear. They just don't like their nails done. But yes, and then the very long driveway, very wide as well, it's just easy for cars to do a U-turn to get in and out of. And then no neighbors will be easily distracted because it is, sorry. Thank you so much. Look at that, the face. So neighbors won't be distracted. When I spoke to my surrounding neighbors about it, they didn't even know, they had no idea. And so they were all for it.
All right, any questions from the board on any of this? Yeah, this seems like a very low-impact business.
It is, yes.
When no one's even going to know exists.
Pretty much.
And it's in a location that's, that's appropriate.
Absolutely. So what I'll go ahead and do at this point is I'll open this to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. Do I hear a motion?
Hold on one second, Mr. Chairman. You should have, your packets are in front of you, a letter from an abutter.
Oh.
Could you please read that?
Yep, okay, yep. All right, I'll go ahead and read that in. From Louise Kozas at 5 Emerald Street. "I am the current owner of 168 Turkey Hill Road, which abuts the property 167 Turkey Hill Road. The purpose of this letter is to express my objection to the requested variance. It is my view that if the variance is approved, it will have a negative impact on the value of my property. Increased traffic and increased noise from barking dogs are truly worrisome. I earnestly request this variance is denied. Please consider that if I'd received notice of this requested variance prior to Saturday, July 27, I may have been able to make arrangements to be at the hearing to be held on July 31. My inability to attend this meeting does not indicate lack of interest." And I think that we've addressed pretty much everything that this letter states.
So to the community, is there any reason why she didn't get her information?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Community development. Is this question, she said that she didn't get the information prior?
She received the notification on time. What happened was the, the letter writer's Merrimack address was inadvertently written on the mailing label. That person has actually moved to Rhode Island, so it took mail forwarding to get it to Rhode Island and whatnot, so that's the reason.
So this person's in Rhode Island?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I guess with that out of the way, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I actually, one, I, I want to say it's, it's, I, I always like when people have their own businesses and it sounds like you got a good plan, and so I'd like to make a motion to that the board finds the petitioner's response to the statutory criteria sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact and further to grant the variance under section 2.02.1, A2D of the zoning ordinance to permit a dog grooming business as a home occupation in the residential district where such use is expressly prohibited, subject to the following condition. The petitioner shall obtain conditional use permit from the planning board for the proposed Level 2 home occupation.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, 5-0-0. So the, the motion does pass, but just so you know, there is a 30-day window where someone could appeal this, but that being said, I don't think you really have anything you need to do in terms of.
Well, she has to get the, from the, you do have to get the.
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Community development can help you with that. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, the next petition is Michael McLaughlin, petitioner owner variance under section 2.02.1, A3E of the zoning ordinance to permit a 1,248-square-foot attached accessory dwelling unit where maximum 1,000 square feet is permitted. Parcels located 37 Bates Road in the R2 residential by soils district, tax map 3A, lot 9-1, case CBA 2024-18.
Evening, members of the board. I'm attorney Greg Michael, along with Eli Lino from my office, representing the petitioners in this case, which is an accessory dwelling unit in excess of 1,000 square feet. I'd like to take you through some introductory issues that I think may be helpful in evaluating the five criteria that Eli will present to you. I would point out that the parcel is a 5.2-acre parcel of land. It's, it's large in relation to other parcels in Merrimack. It's in the R2 zone. I suppose you could try and subdivide it because it's more than 40,000, 80,000 square feet for two units. But that's not the purpose of the hearing tonight. I'm showing you a plan, and there's a reason why we submitted this plan. My clients initially were interested in building an attached slash, I'll use the term detached, ADU. And they jettisoned that idea. In the process, though, they did have prepared a septic design plan for the additional space. I would point out that the current house has three bedrooms, three bedrooms are being used. When the ADU is constructed, if allowed by the board, there'll still be, there'll be two additional bedrooms in the ADU, but there'll be no additional people. Mr. McLaughlin and his wife will be living downstairs, and Brian and Lauren Leach will be living upstairs in the existing home. There'll be no changes exterior-wise to the house, except the garage inside will be, will be renovated as part of the ADU. Downstairs, the space is 1,248 square feet, thus the need for the 248-square-foot variance associated with this. It doesn't make any sense to renovate the downstairs and somehow leave 248 feet of bare space in the current basement. That's part of the hardship that I'm sure Eli will address with you. But pointing out the septic, the septic was approved in April of 2024 for the full five bedrooms if needed. The way the statutory scheme works under the state statute is that you need to show that you can have a sufficient septic to satisfy the ADU, and this shows that. I also have a letter from, from Fieldstone Associates. We got it late, it wasn't filed. I know the board doesn't like to accept documents after the fact. But by Kenneth Robinson writes, "The test bit conducted on the above referenced lot indicated soil conditions suitable for an onsite subsurface sewage disposal system in accordance with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Subservice System Bureau Rules, Environmental WQ 1000, and the Town of Merrimack Regulations and Ordinances." On-site soil conditions exceed, exceed the requirements for the existing three-bedroom dwelling and the proposed two-bedroom dwelling. This was written in conjunction, as they say, with this plan. This plan was approved, and I'm pointing this out because one of the criteria for an ADU is to show that the, there'll be no issues with the septic, and there won't be any issues with the septic. My clients are prepared to deal with it if needed, and as they say, they have a proposed plan for that purpose. I don't have much more to say from an introductory standpoint, but I did want to, as I say, address the plan and address the septic, because I know that's an important consideration. On the reverse, I did post or blow up. This is the basement schematic for the ADU. It's nicely done, living room, kitchen, the bedrooms, laundry and so forth. It's a, it's a, will be a nicely appointed addition to the house, but again, no one's going to see it because it's basically a renovation of the basement area that many people do. If you don't have any questions to me at this point, I'll let Eli take over on the five criteria, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think I'm, I'm a little confused here.
Go ahead.
So you were pointing out the basement, is that the basement of the proposed two-bedroom apartment?
This, yeah, it, it, the basement will kind of have, that's the ADUs in the basement.
Okay.
The ADU conversion is in the basement. This building in orange will not be built.
Okay. Oh, okay, that's.
This will not be built.
That's why I'm confused.
This will not be built.
That was a confusion.
And in fact, the proposed, and this, this car pit thing, this car thing is gone. What you're going to be left with is the house with a renovated basement is the ADU.
Oh, okay.
And there's plenty of space for, for parking here. You need the space for parking. Plenty of space for the 5.2 acres of land. This orange will not be built. But the septic plan was done with the understanding that then at some point, you could need a five, you know, the five-bedroom system.
Okay, so from a septic standpoint, it's fine?
It's fine.
Okay.
Either way. It's five bedrooms either way. It would have been two bedrooms in here, two bedrooms in the basement. But we've shown that we can do it. The septic system doesn't need to be changed. You've got three bedrooms being used now, and there'll be three bedrooms being used when the ADU is built. Mr. and Mrs. McLaughlin, the Leaches, and their, and their two-year-old, that's your three bedrooms. Have I clarified that, I hope, Mr. Chairman, members? Thank you.
So I have a question. So you said the, the septic is approved, but you're going from a three-bedroom septic, staying with a three-bedroom septic, you don't need a five?
If, if we need it. We don't, we don't need it right now. It's, this is, the, the people are living here now. All of the people are living in this house right now, everybody.
Oh, I understand that, that piece there, I just remember.
We'll have, we'll have more, we'll have technically have more bedrooms, but then aren't going to be used. And the purpose of the plan is to show that if needed, if needed, we can install a five-bedroom system. And that's what we need to show. And this has been approved by the state.
Okay, I, I was just wondering, if you go to a five-bedroom, why wouldn't you require, be required to have a five-bedroom septic at that time?
Well, because it's, it costs a lot of money to do it, and we don't need to do it. It's, 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 we're going to have three bedrooms being used now and three bedrooms when we finish it. But because there is the five bedrooms, we've got to show you, we have to show you that there's plenty of room in the 5.2 acres to do this, which this plan shows.
Yeah, and that's really.
And the letter that I read to you shows.
That's really for the building inspector, right?
Yeah, so if the septic fails as is for the three bedrooms, they would then have to install a septic that's five bedrooms. They don't have to install it now because their septic is still of working condition.
Got it, thank you.
That's an accurate statement, thank you.
So do I understand that you currently have a three-bedroom house?
Three-bedroom house.
You're going to put three bedrooms in the basement?
Two bedrooms in the basement.
Okay, and the three bedrooms that are originally in the house are going to be vacant?
Yeah.
Why?
The parents are going to move downstairs.
Two of the.
They don't have that many people.
Upstairs are going to be occupied, parents and daughter.
The parents are going to move downstairs.
Oh, grandparents downstairs? So they need three bedrooms?
The parents are living there now. They're going to move downstairs to the ADU.
And they need three bedrooms?
Well.
For two people?
If we're going to build it, we're going to build it. We'd like to.
You're building a two-family in a one-family lot? One family's house.
No, no, it's an eight, it's a lot. Two bedrooms are allowed by your ordinance.
1,000 square feet?
1,000 square feet is allowed, but two bedrooms are allowed in an ADU. Any ADU is allowed two bedrooms.
To a maximum 1,000 square feet?
Well, the, the overall ADU, a maximum of 1,000, that's correct, sir.
Okay.
I, I think, Ben, the difference being that the ADU is sharing utilities and sharing entrances as opposed to a multifamily where there'd be separate utilities and separate entrances. So it's still technically an ADU, it's just a, a larger ADU. And the reasoning of the variance is because by putting it in the basement, it's going to naturally be larger than 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so then, what's to prevent them from turning into a two-family when they sell it down the road?
Well, you could say that about any ADU, with all due respect. I mean, there's a covenant that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds regarding conversions and, and things like that.
I understand.
But you, you, we could, we could, when, when this came before, the legislature has enacted a law that says ADUs are allowed as a matter of right. And could people violate the law? Yes, I'm sure they could. My clients are here so that they don't violate the law. We're doing this the right way. The only issue is 248 square feet. The rest of the criteria are being met for legal-allowed ADU. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think it might be helpful to go through the five variance criteria. I think that would maybe help Mr. Niles see what our clients are requesting here, and then we certainly are able to answer any follow-up questions you may have. And so.
Okay.
Criteria one, waiving the terms of the ordinance will not be contrary to the public interest. Supreme Court has two basic tests for this to show that a proposal doesn't violate the zoning ordinance's basic objectives, which are that the proposal doesn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood or harm the health, safety, or welfare of the public. The first criteria in that test, that this doesn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, is maybe never more clearly proven than this, where we're not changing the outside of this residential house. There's a requirement that any ADU doesn't then look like a two-family dwelling. The, the criteria for that are clear. This will be the same entrances, it will be the same footprint, it will look functionally identical to how it looks now. It will just have this renovated basement. And in no way will that proposal adding two bedrooms to the basement harm the public health, safety, or welfare. There's adequate room here, five-acre law, all the things that Attorney Michael discussed. So I think it's a pretty, clearly meets this first criteria.
I think my only question here is, the characteristics that are defining this as an ADU and not a simple expansion are, are what, that it's got a, a separate kitchen area?
Pardon me?
I'm just, I, I, I'm curious, just what characteristics qualify this as an ADU, not just an expansion of the house? Is it that it has its own kitchen area?
Well, they, there, there is a proposed, let me just get my, there is a kitchen dining area, which would be part of most ADUs. It has a separate, that's very, that's common on just about every ADU, and it, it's right here.
I looked at that as well in the ordinance, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know what in particular stops them from renovating the basement.
Right.
It's already within the home, it doesn't change. It's not that new, clearly ADU with the party wall and all the other things defined by section 2.02.13. But again, I think that the town's request was for this permit. They got the permit for the 994-square-foot version. Realized that wasting that 248 square feet of sort of dry storage, wasted space that you would have to build this partition wall for is, again. for is, again, the hardship I'll discuss in a moment, but.
Oh, and that, that makes total sense. It, it would be silly to waste money on that.
Yeah. So I'm a little bit out of order on my criteria.
No, no, it's okay. No, I was just trying to, you know, because whenever I, whenever I see variances like this, I try to think to myself, like, what, what could be done to, to mitigate the need for variance anyway? Not that I, I'm advising that on any level, but I'm just curious what makes, because this is, you know, I think ADU, I think somebody building a separate unit that, slapping onto the side and.
And, and, let me just say this. I mean, this is, this has come up everywhere. You know, when, when does it become a separate unit that someone could sabotage the ordinance with? I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at. Usually, at least my experience in Merrimack, which was back a number of years, that if you present plans for plumbing and kitchens, they won't allow it. Unless, in other words, they won't allow that kitchen area unless you have some sort of a variance for either the ADU, if you need a variance, or a variance for a duplex. That's always been my understanding. So if I came in for plans to build something and renovate, and I tried to put a, a kitchen in, which requires, you know, certain electrics, plumbing, different things like that. The town historically, in my experience, won't approve that because, for that very reason. And their, their comment would be, wait a minute, this basically turns it into a duplex. This basically turns it into another unauthorized living unit. And have people done this on the QT? Of course they have.
Oh, yeah. We've seen it.
Are these, do these exist here? Yeah. Do they exist in other towns? Yes. It's not what people should be doing, admittedly. My clients are here to do it right.
Yeah.
And the only issue is the 248 square feet. It's not a kitchen issue. It's not a bedroom issue. It's the 248 square feet, which corresponds to the footprint of the house.
So.
Makes sense.
With regard to criteria two, the spirit of the ordinance, Supreme Court in Keen versus Bearer has held that that's related to the first criteria, that if you meet the first test, you generally meet the second. But also in terms of upholding the spirit of the ordinance, this is a residential zone, proposed residential use, and again, meets all of the criteria for the special exception allowed by right, as you discussed in an earlier hearing, but for this 248 square feet. So I think this meets the spirit of the ordinance with regard to what's being proposed. Substantial justice has been held as a balancing test. The quote, relevant quote from the Supreme Court is, "Perhaps the only guiding rule is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice." Bring the quote up here because I think that this is one where if we have the applicant build this wall and not improve a certain amount of space, the 248 square feet, the public gains nothing to that, but the applicant certainly loses in paying for a wall that makes the whole project worse. So it stands as an injustice under that Supreme Court balancing test. In terms of the value of the surrounding property, again, a little bit of a broken record on this, but it's not changing the outside of this house. The same people that are living there now will live there in a better layout that makes more sense for this family. It's going to have no effect on property values whatsoever. Again, large lot, should all be fine. Hardship, Mr. Chairman spoke to this a moment ago, but the fact that the house has a 1,248-square-foot footprint, that's the existing footprint, and if we build and then stop at the 1,000 or 999 square feet to be compliant with this, it creates this hardship whereby they just have to waste the value of the space of the house to the benefit of no one, as discussed in the balancing test. So the existing building and the square footage of the house is what creates this hardship on a, a lot that's substantially larger than the minimum that's required, et cetera. So no benefit to the public to force that, and it is an inherently reasonable request. Proposed use is reasonable and allowed use is deemed reasonable by the Supreme Court. And then for the reasons incorporated in our presentation tonight, what they're trying to do is just right-size this use inside the house, not changing anything to the outside world, but making this work better for the family and, and have a more viable space on that lower level. We remain certainly happy to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration tonight.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. I'll go ahead and open to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor or against this petition? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public. Do I hear a motion?
I can practice.
Go for it.
I haven't done one before, so, let's see, I make a motion to grant the board, or I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact. And further, to grant the variance under section 2 dot 02 dot 1 A3E of the zoning ordinance to permit a 1,248-square-feet-attached-accessory-dwelling-unit ADU, whereas a maximum of 1,000 square feet is permitted, subject to the following condition: The petitioner shall obtain an amended administrative approval for the proposed attached ADU.
A second.
All right. Motion made by Scott, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today.
You did a great job with your first motion.
Scott is now officially a member.
He is.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, so for the fourth item, this is, this doesn't require any type of communication with general public, but I'll go ahead and read it in for discussion. This is Kono LLC petitioner-owner request for rehearing of our ZBA case 2024-13, in which the board granted variances under section 3.02, the zoning in, the zoning ordinance to permit the subdivision of a property into four lots with frontages of 111.38 feet, 120.95 feet, 103.30 feet, and 30.85 feet respectively, whereas 200 feet of frontage is required. The parcel is located at 103 Severance Bridge Road in the R2 Residential by soils in Alcoa for Conservation Districts, tax map 3A, Lot 55, case ZBA 2024-13. So for those of you who were not here for either the May or the June hearings, this was a case where the original plan necessitated no variance, but the reason why a variance was requested was because the town would have to maintain an additional road, which would utilize more town resources. And so the variance was to, I'm sorry?
I remember this. This was in May?
It was in May.
Was this the one with the presentation? And it was, it could be the circle or?
Right.
Yeah.
I thought we voted on that in May.
We, so in May, here's what happened. In May, we voted 2-2 because we're only four people here.
That's right.
And that was a technical failure on, on our part because that doesn't pass. So we re, we ended up continuing it into the June hearing where we heard it and when we granted it. And the request for rehearing is specific to hearing this case an additional time.
Why?
So it's a request for a rehearing. In order to grant a request for a rehearing, there have to be one of two issues. Either there has to have been a, a technical issue with the hearing, which technically in May there was. We thought voting 2-2 would fail it. We were wrong. So to fix that, we continued it, and then we actually heard it. So.
In June?
Right.
We did.
Yeah.
And, and so the other, the other prong to, to rehearing the case is there has to be a material difference that we missed.
Sure.
Meaning that some kind of item is presented to us, like here, I bet you didn't know this about what they're looking to do, and hand it to us. And, and that did not exist within this documentation that we were provided. So.
So the recall, so again, the request for rehearing after we already approved something is not valid.
Yes, Patrick, this is an appeal from the abutter, not from the applicant itself.
Oh.
Yeah. That would have been, I should have, sorry, I should have clarified.
Didn't start with that.
Yeah. Thank you. So it wasn't like an appeal of our decision. It was just a request for rehearing. So the only thing that I would say to this is that if you feel that hearing it a second time would change your outcome because there's something that you were presented with that I'm unaware of, please let me know, because I see nothing in terms of new information that we missed from the June hearing.
Is the, is the abutter providing new information?
They would have had to have provided it in this. It would have been.
And they didn't.
They did not.
They did not. I, I, to be honest with you, I wasn't here in the June meeting. I did read the, this. I did not watch the video. But after reading this and reading through this, I wouldn't have, I would have voted in the negative. So if you guys passed it, I mean, I, but I don't have actually really a say in this with this one, because I wasn't here for the hearing in June.
Although that may be true, would, do you feel that there was something that was materially brought in by this, this letter that we missed?
No, not.
Rehearing request?
No, not from what I, not from what I read, but just the thing, just the whole variance in general, I wouldn't, wouldn't, I wouldn't have approved it, but that's me.
Well, but you weren't here in June.
Right, exactly. So that's why I am.
The board did not air, okay?
Correct.
And based on Supreme, Supreme Court rulings, it can only be granted if the petitioner can demonstrate the board committed a technical error or there's new evidence. And neither of those two conditions exist.
Actually, we, so the, the interesting thing about this is we did commit a technical error in May.
In May, but in June.
And then we.
But not in June.
We corrected it in June.
Right.
So that.
And there was a comment made by the abutter that our vote in June was illegal because they didn't file for a rehearing until after the date. But the point was.
We continued it, though.
We continued it. There was no.
There was no error.
There was no error because there was no decision made.
We corrected the error.
That's correct.
Therefore, you did not make an error.
That's right.
Right. Well, I think technically Robert helped correct that error.
Yes. I will give Robert the credit. I didn't do that.
Texting is a good thing.
Since I, I made the error.
Twice.
Well, in fairness, in fairness, I, I know I'm not crazy because Patrick agreed with it. We were told at one point in time that a 2-2 was a failure, although that is no longer true and laws change.
Whatever.
We were told that at one point in time. That was the error. By continuing this case, so if anything, the, the true error was with the first petition we dealt with tonight, not this.
That's correct.
So. So to sum it up, the rehearing does not have any grounds.
I mean, if, when you read it, like, the unnecessary hardship, it talks about the, you know, the less of the frontage in, in pursuant to Merrimack zoning ordinance. So the whole point of the variance was to get the frontage cut back so that you could make those lots. I mean, if I'm reading this correctly, from what they said.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I don't, unless, unless there's something more, I, I don't see it.
I think, I think why I'm, what confuses me about this particular thing is that, let's say we rehear it and we deny the variance. Let's say that, that's how it played out. Those properties still get built. Nothing changes.
Well, right.
This is, all we're doing is.
They get built in a different way.
Right.
Well, no, they get built in the same way. They just build a road. They add a road. But in terms of what the abutters have to look at in terms of the property, nothing changes except an additional road, so a street sign. In fact, the number of curb breaks, which is one of the things we discussed in June, the number of curb breaks doesn't even change. It's the exact same.
There's still two.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember that. I do.
So it's, it.
I remember that from May. Yep. All right.
But I don't see that there's any reason, based on what we did in June, to grant a rehearing. I see, I see no, I see no justification for that at all.
Right.
So if you want a motion.
The petitioner has, yeah, the petitioner has to show why there's cause.
Right.
And, and that's not enough.
That's right. You want a motion?
Please.
Do I need a hearing? Okay. I make a motion to, to deny a rehearing regarding case ZBA 2024-13, in which the board granted variances under section 2.01, 02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the subdivision of a property into four lots.
That's 3.02.
3.02. Am I stand corrected? To permit the subdivision of a property into four lots with frontage amounts of 111.38 feet, 120.95 feet, 103.3 feet, and 30 feet, 30.85 feet respectively, whereas 200 feet of frontage is required.
A second.
All right, I'll, oh, sorry. Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Patrick.
Just real quick, just to strengthen it, maybe just add on that the board did not feel that the applicant provided the justification necessary to rehear it, to rehearing.
So amended.
Okay. All in favor of?
Denying.
Denying the rehearing? All right, 5-0-0. All right. So for the next item that we have, which is the election of officers, just as a heads up, so you guys all know, my schedule is looking real ugly this year. So I have five kids, two of them are in dance on Wednesday night.
It's one meeting a month.
Right. If that one meeting were on a Tuesday, I'd be okay. If that one meeting were on Tuesday, or Thursday, or Friday, or even a Monday, but Wednesday is my, my not-good day this, this upcoming year. So I don't mind being re-elected the chairman, but there will be many, and I do, I have to really emphasize this, there will be many meetings that I will likely miss due to parenting issues. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to leave my kids home alone while.
I nominate Rich as, as chairman.
Oh, don't even just plow right through it.
You do a great job.
No pressure, though.
And I'm, I'm pleased that you're willing to at least make the attempt.
I'm going to. It's just going to be tough.
It's always tough.
Do I have a second on that?
Do I?
Second.
Okay.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben, to keep me tied to this chair. All in favor?
Well, hold on a second, hold on a second. So before you vote, do you, it's something important to think here. I mean, this is, do you want to? It's not a matter of what people, if you don't want to do it, you've done it now for, like, four years. If you don't want to do it, then don't do it. You know, and, and I totally get it. Family does come first. Regardless of what Lynn said about nominating you, if you don't want to do it, then don't do it, dude.
I don't, I don't mind doing it. My concern is that how effective of a chair can I be if I miss, let's say, four or five meetings in the next year?
So, like I said.
That's my concern.
Like I said, if you have a concern and you don't want to do it, or you don't, you,[1641.33] So like I said, like I said, if you have a concern and you don't want to do it, or you don't, you, you don't feel that you have it in you, then don't point at me. Then, 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 I mean, don't, you're not tied to the chair, you know? And if you, but it's entirely up to you. If you, if you want to go for it, then fine. You got us through COVID, you go ahead. Don't get us, sit down. Down, stop it. I'm just trying, I just don't want you to feel like you have to.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
So if I'm being totally candid.
Which we'd like you to be.
I know you don't want to do it. I know Lynn doesn't want to do it. I know Ben doesn't want to do it. This is Scott's first night.
I would, I would. Honestly, honestly, if you don't want to, I, I don't have a problem with it. But I don't want, I, but I bow to you, you've done a great job, and, you know, if you want to continue doing it, I'm all for it. It, but it's, but it's entirely up to you.
So you could be vice chair and somebody else could be chair.
Sure. If that's what the board, if that's what everybody here feels, then we could go down that road. But you just, I'm not, look, I've, I've sat in that chair many, many times. I know exactly, I know exactly where you're believing.
And you trained him well.
And so I, 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 I know where you're, I know where you're coming from. But at the end of the day, if, if, it's, it's really, it's up to you. Because I've sat in that chair long enough going, you know what? Good. But I, I just, just make, I don't want you to feel like, but if you, if you're like, yes, guys, this is what I want to do, you've got my vote.
All right. Then let me, let me, let me back up and say, before we consider that, whoever takes the place of vice chair is really going to have to stand up multiple meetings. So.
Do you have any other nominations for chair?
Lynn, I nominate you.
I'm, I'm a short timer.
Yep.
I would nominate Patrick.
All right, I will. I will nominate Patrick as chair.
And I will nominate Rich as vice chair. And you can vote on the both.
We'll arm wrestle on who takes the Wednesday off. Do we have a quorum? All right, here we go.
I, look, I, I support you, buddy. I always have, ever since you've been on, started on the board. In fact, I was the one who signed for you to get on the board. I interviewed you. So I, I totally, I totally got your back.
That was a long time ago.
A long time ago. You tell me what you want to do, and I, I, I got your back, bud.
I am okay with doing either chair or vice chair. I don't really care. I just want to be transparent about the fact that there may be multiple nights that I end up missing over the next.
Would you feel more, would you feel more comfortable taking a vice chair position?
Yes.
Okay. So then, Lynn, roll out the nominations.
I will, I will withdraw my nomination of Rich as chair and stand by my nomination of Patrick for chair and Rich for vice chair.
And I assume Ben would withdraw his second from Lynn's original motion.
And second my second.
All right.
That keeps him from having to be vice chair.
So do we have a.
That I'll second Lynn's.
Second Lynn's.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion made by Lynn Second and by Scott. All in favor for Patrick as chair?
And Rich as vice chair. It's a, it's a combined, it's a combined motion.
Well, then, then we, then you'd have three and two abstentions. Don't we normally abstain?
No, you don't abstain.
Okay.
You do not have to abstain from it. You can if you want to, but you do not have to.
All right, fine.
I'll put my hand up.
Yes.
Five zero zero. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Let, let's get this pushed through.
So before we, before we go too far in this, I do actually kind of want to hear Scott's opinion on this, because this is kind of his deal.
So I did, I did start reading into this a little bit, just on the front pages. So first thing, section two, article two, member terms and lengths, item J, or article J, I don't know what they are, subsection J, members and alternates shall review all materials provided in advance of the meeting and shall be prepared to act on all agenda items. It's not really enforceable. I mean, that's, that's kind of like implied in, in taking the board. I don't know if it's necessary. And then having the shall in there, so I don't know what you're going to do with that, but the, the old one, it said like, are expected to, which I think is, is fine if you want to keep this in there. And then if we do keep that, it belongs in either the next, it belongs in the next section, not in article two. Because it is a duty or a responsibility, not a membership or term length.
Okay, so you want to move article, you want to move, in article two J, you want to move to article three?
It, yeah, if we keep it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't understand the need for it.
May, largely, in, in my experience, largely, it's because you can show up to a board meeting and you don't, is an alternate, and you don't know if you're going to get called on or not, and if you're not familiar with the material. The members, it's expected that the members, that review everything beforehand, but if you're an alternate, you can get called to a meeting and not know you're going to get called, you, you don't know if you're going to step up and, you know, it's kind of like, you know, baseball. You don't know if you're playing or not. You know, all of a sudden you get called up and you got to play. So you, they want, that's, I think, a little bit more towards the alternates to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, because they could very well be called up to discuss. And in some cases, it's not even a full meeting. If, say, if, say Ben and Lynn have to abstain themselves, you might only get called up on one case
Yep.
to overhear. So it's, that's why you have to be familiar with all of them, because you don't know who may or may not abstain, or who may or may not show up.
Okay, so I would, I would just say, change the language from shall to, you know, members and alternates should be prepared to participate.
Shall they should.
Or shall, I would change it, members and alternates are expected to review, are expected.
That's fine. That's, that's similar. But shall is like a, you must, you will, you have to.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying. Yeah.
And you want to move it, you want to move J to?
Article three.
Article three.
So it should be I.
I'm good with that.
Yep. I've made that change.
Okay.
Next thing, more language, I saw the introduction of shall a couple of times here, so article four B, absence for five consecutive meetings without notice shall constitute non-interest. I don't know if that's necessary language there either. Article, let's see, I put a note here, article two.
We had to put that in there in the last ten years.
Yes, we did. That, that, that actually needs to be in there because there.
It says non-interest?
Yeah, because we've.
There, there have been issues.
Yes, there have been issues. So that, that actually.
We had a member.
I can tell you that that needs, that does.
We have similar language existing, right?
We had a member who was not voted for chair.
Yeah.
That member became so upset, they stopped showing up, and we had no way of removing them. Long story short.
Okay, so non-interest is like the legal term for removal, one of the criteria for removal?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
You can't fire a volunteer. I think that's the problem.
In the old one, it says the board may for the derish, uh, no, that's not it. Where is it? It was here somewhere. It wa, it was three and not five, right? Or three and then five unexcused?
It was, it was three. That is actually on the first page letter. It's two D.
Two D.
In, in the old one.
Oh, absence, yeah. After three consecutive, unexcused absence, the chair will confer with the member. After five, annual unexcused, the chair may recommend to the town council.
Can we alter the number of alternates we have?
You cannot. You're, you're capped at three.
That's pretty deep, actually.
Okay, I mean, it's not that big of a deal. I just, I noticed that, and then I put article two I was similar. The board may vote to recommend to the town council that a member be removed from the board for cause pursuant to RSA six seventy-three thirteen, so it was somewhat redundant? So I didn't know.
That, that's a, that's a different reasons for removing.
Yeah.
There are two different reasons. One is non-attendance, one is cause.
But they both say six seventy-three dash thirteen.
Cause malfeasance of office. It, it's defined in that RSA, basically.
Yeah, so it just sounds, it's in there twice.
We're allowed to have electronic meetings?
Oh, I got that next.
Yes, legally you are, yes.
Yes. We had them during COVID.
Yeah, but then we were told absolutely not, and that's how we lost a couple of people, I believe. Because after, we lost people during the COVID, after COVID, because they had to start showing up. I can't remember who it was.
MBD looked at that a couple of times with their representation, and the statement was, you need to have a quorum physically in the room unless it's an emergency meeting. And then you can have additional members attend electronically remotely. But you need to have a physical quorum.
That makes sense.
So the, the problem with that one, though, is in article five D, quorum, physical presence of a minimum of three required. So you can say you can have others. And then in section E, special meetings talks about same thing, physically present. So you, you got to be careful in, in how that's worded, I think, because if the chair allows four out of five members to be remote, I mean, you can't, right? Because you have to have three physically present, is what it says.
And it would probably make sense to say that, because I think the RSA calls.
It does call for physical presence. So just to, to back up, because we're, we've started going, and now we're going down the road. So let me go back up first to the absences thing.
To be, yeah.
So the RSA quotes inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. Those are the reasons that the council could remove someone from the board.
So we're duplicating it? We don't need the second one.
That's what it sounds like to me, but.
Or just incorporate them so that it addresses, because the first one only addresses absence. So what you're going to say is recommend to the, the town council, removal of this person based on the criteria defined in RSA da-da.
Honestly, five consecutive meetings is a lot.
Yeah, it is.
So why don't I just take out the absence for five consecutive meetings? We'll just leave it as the board may, may vote to recommend somebody be removed pursuant to the RSA and just leave that there in that way.
It's already in section two. It's already in article two.
We don't need it in both places.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So B, I'm going to delete the first sentence. Article four B. And I've got the board may, get rid of then, vote to recommend to the town council that the member be removed, that, okay, I'll, I'll tweak that around.
I mean, either that, or you can leave the absence statement, just take out the rest. It doesn't, whatever makes sense, I guess. It just stood out to me, so.
Ah, I don't like that.
That a member be removed from the board pursuant to da-da-da-da.
So what's the RSA again say?
Six seventy-three thirteen says, the, the, the facts are inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office.
Okay, so now neglect of duty could be considered absences, so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right. I, I, okay, I'm fine with that, then.
Yeah. Most of these aren't really that big of a deal. It's just clarification, I guess.
So look what happens when you bring somebody new onto the board?
Well, this is a new document, too.
You get a fresh new document. No, I know. Well, it's a new document, but I mean, a lot, a lot of the stuff is, has been around for a while, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
But it's a good, it's good to have a good, it's good to have a different set of eyes on it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we get to the, uh, the physical presence part, so same section, so article four F, alternates shall be chosen on a rotational based basis, right? Is there an RSA that says that we have to do that?
No, it's just something that we, we tend to do to give the alternates, to make sure that the, all of the.
It's good practice.
Have a chance to practice, and, because alternates step up and become full times, and so.
Right, but if for some reason you don't, or you mistakenly do it, you've got something in there that says you have to do it?
No, there's nothing saying that we have to do it.
Shall.
We shall do it because we want to make sure that the alternates get practical experience in hearing out and voting on cases.
Yeah, I would just change it to should then.
Should.
Should, shall. I mean, I mean, that, that, to me, that, to me, that's semantics, but I get what you're saying.
To you, yeah.
All the ISO standards call for should if it's optional and shall if it's mandatory.
Right.
That's where it's coming from.
Thank you. I was trying to forget being an ISO auditor. I didn't want to, I didn't want to bring that up, but thank you for taking me back to work. Thanks.
All right, I've changed to, to should in four F.
Okay. All right, and then back to the physical presence.
Actually, I would like to make.
Are you going to, before that?
Well, I, I do like very much that you mentioned that article four, bullet point G, that are, because that was really not clear to me where that was written, alternates shall sit with the board and may participate in discussion before the board, but do not have voting rights. So I appreciate that, that clarification. That's very helpful.
Perfect.
Yeah, you can always chime in.
Yes.
Yeah. We, we don't generally change meeting rooms, right?
Uh, yeah, sometimes.
Sometimes it does happen.
Okay. Well, all right, so article five A says meetings are held in Matthew Thornton Room unless otherwise indicated. It's just.
Yes. We've, what was it?
From a.
Usually in January, the council bumps the ZBA out.
Yep, then they do budgets, and we meet over in the, we meet over in the other building, which is the room that I was originally.
Okay. I didn't know if it would just be better to just say, hey, we meet on whatever's on the posted agenda.
I think it's fine like it is.
Then you don't have to update this again.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, I mean, I could get into that specifics, but I mean, it happens like literally once a year, if that, yeah.
Yeah, that's just a. All right, then, physical presence, do we have anything on that?
I, I have zero opinion on any of this.
No.
Would you stick it, which article, which one do you all know?
The, so D and E that has the physical presence, so just making sure that that made sense.
D and E.
I have time to really.
Under article what?
Uh, five. Just in, in conflict with article four D.
Well, four B we revised.
Four D.
Four D. Oh, I thought you said B.
Yeah.
Um, no, because of the, if the quorum cannot be a subject. No, because D says that the person can be here electronically, and the meeting, it, article five D says that there has to be a quorum. So if the quorum means that there's a person that's meeting electronically, then, but we, we have, we do have to have in there that we do have to have a quorum.
Three physical presence.
Oh, you're talking physical presence?
Yeah. D says physically present for a quorum.
Yep.
And that is true unless it's an emergency meeting.
Okay. All right, so the chair just needs to be careful about granting electronic permission, basically.
Rarely happens.
I, yeah, I, okay. Never, I've never, except for COVID, I could never remember, ever even being asked.
What else?
The law was amended to allow it. I threw it in there because the law's been changed since the last update was done to the rules of procedure, but I don't foresee the board using that very often, if at all.
Got it. Um, I think the only other one I had was all the way back on page seven, voting.
Yeah, me too.
Which one was your question?
So article seven B, voting in paragraph one. I wanted to make sure we're clear on that. So it says excluding.
Sorry about that. Excluding the chair, only seated members, not alternates, may make a motion.
Yes.
Correct.
Um, I think it would be clearer if it were, were to say not unseated alternates. Does that make sense?
If you're.
Because alternates can make a motion if they are seated during a specific meeting, right?
And then you are not, no longer an alternate.
Then you're a member.
Then you're a full member.
For that meeting. Is that the definition? Is that written somewhere?
So if I.
That's actually a good point, because I don't really know.
Well, I mean, basically what you're saying is that if I'm being seated as an alternate, I'm no longer an alternate, I'm a seated member, but I'm not sure if, I mean, is that really the definition?
Yes.
So I think the way we handle this is that when you are an alternate and you, you're actually sitting in as another member, who is a full member.
Okay.
So technically, when we tap on an alternate, we have to say, they're sitting specifically for this other member.
Which is why at the beginning of the meeting, we'll say, Wolfrem, you're sitting in for whoever, Chuck, Patrick, whoever. You're sitting in for, and that's why we have to, we have to officially declare it at the beginning of the meeting, so that they know that. Now, if it's a particular variance, say it's one variance because somebody is, is abstaining, then we could say, then we have to, the chair at that has to say, for this variance, Wolfrem, you'll be sitting in for Rich, which then, at that point, would say you are, for that situation, you're a sitting member for that situation.
Right. I guess, I guess if I look at this from a public standpoint, if I look at the website, I'm listed as an alternate, and that means that I can't make a motion. Right. Unless I have the knowledge that once I'm sitting or seated for a permanent, I'm sorry, for a seated member, then I, I'm temporarily not an alternate, right?
I have, I have no problem making the change.
I, I just think it's a little bit ambiguous.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you want to, if you want to further clarify it, I mean, it's, it's, some of the stuff is just, I guess, tribal knowledge that we have from being, from doing this, that you just, but I understand if you're looking at it from, you know, just coming on, you're like, okay, oh, hey, I got some questions to write, which is cool, which is fine. So how did you want to, how did you want to, what was your proposal to kind of adapt that? I've got a thought.
So if I delete the parenthetical note there, just leave it, excluding the chair, only seated members can make a motion. Rest of it reads right through. And at the end, add alternates who have not been seated in place of a recused or otherwise disqualified member may not make a motion.
That's fine.
I'd be fine with that. Thank you.
Yep.
And exactly what you just said, just, you know, when I'm looking at this from, you know, from the outside, it's like, it should be easy for me to understand exactly what these things mean. So same section D, a motion duly seconded and shall be passed by a majority of members present and voting in the affirmative. That was also in the, the lawyer's note in the packet, and, you know, he called that out. I'm like, what is that, what is that supposed to mean? I'm sure it probably came from the RSA.
So a motion duly seconded, so when, so when, so if Lynn makes a motion.
So I got that part, yeah.
And Neil, and, and, and Ben, sorry, Ben seconds it, then we put the motion up for a vote. And if the vote is passed by a majority of members, it has to be passed by a majority of members present, voting in the affirmative. So like I said, so if every, you know, five zero, that's the affirmative. Now, the motion wouldn't pass if, say, one person voted for it and four people voted against it, then it has to be reread in as a denial.
Okay.
Okay, so now, say it's written as a denial, because I'll, I'll explain it to you so you can understand it. So say it's written into a denial, and now one person votes against it, but four people vote for it, it passes, but it passes as a denial, not an approval.
Right, so basically, the shall really means can only be passed by? Is that what that's supposed to mean?
Motion duly seconded shall be passed or, or can be passed by, or should be passed, or shall be passed. I mean.
I think it's a shell.
I, yeah, so I'm going to propose an amendment to this, because it's not even just a majority, because the ZBA is different, and this is one of those carryover tweaks from when I borrowed language from the planning boards. In your unique case, you have to have the minimum of three votes in order for something to carry. And what makes this worse is the language in the RSA, which states, "The concurring vote of any three members of the board shall be necessary to take any action on any matter on which it is required to pass." But it doesn't necessarily mean that you're making a motion for something, you have to have three votes to, to pass or grant something. It's, it's a motion to carry. So that language doesn't help either. So give me a minute, I'll see if I can word this better and make it more laben.
Like, I think I get the intent. It's just when you read it, it just means. Like, I think I get the intent, it's just, when you read it, it just means something different, so.
So, yeah, and it, and again, to Robert's point, the, the, the voting here is a lot different than in a lot of the other boards. We're the only board, we're the only quasi judicial board in the town. Well, you're right, is that right? Yeah. So we're the, you know, like, the planning board can't break ordinances, or break variances, or change it, only we can. So, um, it, voting's, we're, terminology around voting can be a little different than it would be for, say, like Conservation Commission, or highways, or something like that.
Good education for me.
You done?
What else you got?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm done. I didn't get to the, to the re- the rest of it just looked like it was directly from the RSA's, so for the most part, I, any of this stuff looked okay.
So do
We don't need a vote.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be something that carries on to the next meeting, I, I imagine.
If, if you'd like to see it again.
I don't think so. I think we can just
Vote on the changes that we just agreed to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the, for, for changing that bullet three, I got, "A motion duly seconded shall require a minimum of three votes of seated members in order to carry."
That's fine.
Okay, that's way more clear, actually.
Yep.
Yeah, I like that. I like that works.
So at this point, if you find these are acceptable, as we've amended tonight, I'd lead a motion to approve or adopt the rules of procedure as amended.
So move.
All right, made by Lynn, seconded by Scott, all in favor? Aye. All right, motion on meeting minutes from June?
Move we approve as distributed.
I, I wasn't here, so.
I'll second it.
I can now.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor? All opposed? All abstain? Well, three zero two. Yeah. You, no, you actually can
Also nice clarification, by the way, if I may add, that the fact that you wrote there that abstentions are undesirable, you know, in which we
Well, some of the abstains
But that you actually can actually technically vote on meeting minutes and on your own
I wa- I watched the meeting on TV. If I, if I miss it, I watch it, so I know what's going on.
No, but the clarification is really well done here, so.
How many times have you been like, no, Rich, no?
I move adjourned.
Because I'm pretty sure that's what Robert was doing.
Second.
All right, motion by Lynn, seconded by Patrick, all in favor?
And you don't, you don't need to move to adjourn, you can just adjourn.
All right, five zero zero, good night, everyone. We're not even on air at this point.